Are y'all going to the rain in there?
They will.
Okay, thank you. That's okay. I can run it, thank you. Well, he understands that. We had a conversation. You have to, I'll do whatever you told me I have to do, but I would prefer not to. And we had a conversation about the director of secondary curriculum and instructional coach and support and extra money because he'd get extra money because he'd get his math stipends. Save and drop plus, that's how he can get extra money.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Those shorts thing, alright. There you go. Summer so far?
Yeah.
It seemed like you were rolling around. It's strange.
How'd you like that Dunkin' boots?
Sure. I didn't have nearly as many people wanting Dunkin' boots as they did Jay-Z. There you go.
Jay-Z was raking in the money.
I could get for one hit.
One person gave, one person donated a hundred dollars to let their kid be the first one to Dunkin'.
What we're doing with the mini Grand Canyon out there? They're supposed to be pouring the...
So, I'm not necessarily packing this up from the extreme. Oh wait, no, so the, once they're done. Okay, well, what's, what's government, whenever, this is more bizarre than that. She was supposed to join, I told her to join in six times. Just so we could.
Didn't want to ruin our reputation, I had to sit on the truck for a minute or two. You can take Steve's too, still need, take mine too, boy. Me, do you want me to? It's here for you. Get that. Gosh. Stretching it with a little water.
Yeah, what we can do is just camp with as little as we got.
You can do good.
We don't have a hammer.
We can refill it out of the sink. Just refill it for next week.
This is my bottle for home, so.
This is gonna kill this man. Like he's gonna bleed out. Do we have something to hammer this? I have a hammer. Dude, this is gonna kill this man. Is the cameras on?
Yes.
They are?
She sees me, I don't see anything, I don't see.
I don't need anybody on camera for the wrestling. I mean, they're, they're. Hey Chad, I want to sit by you, but you need to sit down there. The nails are, the nails are kicking today. Cooper needs to be closer to the middle anyway. I'll take care of a little spot. I've had multiple spots. My first spot was bad. Then it got too close. I'm not used, we're normally on carpet. Might be the same size. There's, there's all the better, like, first time.
Six thirty, the core of the board is present. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the Courts of Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. Please rise, Jerry can leave us for vacation.
Heavenly Father, we're just grateful for this night, Lord, and just humbled too by the fact that we get an opportunity to lead in just direct decisions that impact such a great school district, Lord, and impact the lives of these children, impact the lives of these educators. And everybody involved here, Lord, I pray that us as a, as a body here would operate in unity tonight, Lord, that we would respect one another, that we would make decisions with just a, just a deep thought process in that, Lord, and really Father, be a sounding board for everybody that we are here to represent. Father, guide this process, we love you, in Jesus's name.
Amen. Amen. Pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great fight looking for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong. I will Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state.
Amen. Amen, there we go. Alright, where's Cooper when you need him? Alright. Any public comments? Have you guys been talking? Perfect, cool Chad. Alright. Now we have the Team of Eight Training Workshop Legislative Update. That's missing. She logged in. Just still waiting on others to join. She's not on. Alright. So. She just texted me that she didn't have the right, she thought she did. Yeah Andrea, it's Ethan from Technology. Now you're fine. Yeah, you should, then it will just click on that link, it'll be invite, and it should take me to Teams and then you log in. Set your settings and stuff. You have Zoom? Okay. Now you're fine. So, is that working now for you? Okay. There we go. There we go.
Okay. Can you hear me, let's see.
Yeah, I can hear you.
There we go, alright. Sorry, it's always a process with me, but I do get it eventually. Okay. So. I have a PowerPoint, do you, I sent it to the board before, do you think that they want it, like, is there any way to even do, excuse me, screen share? Or just have them fuck those on their own computer screen?
You should be able to screen share it on your side and then we'll be able to see it.
Okay, let me see.
Ethan, we have one. Okay. They have it?
Does that show it?
Yep, we got it, wait a second.
Okay. Where are they all, are they ready to get started, or are they still meeting?
Yeah, they're ready.
Okay. Are they all, or they can hear me?
Yep, everybody can hear you.
Hey everyone, how you all doing?
Good, how are you?
Um, so, we will go ahead and get started. I guess Ethan, are, are they gonna be able to talk back to me, or ask some questions, or how do you wanna handle questions?
Um, don't say a question, and I'll repeat it.
Okay, sounds good. Alright. Well, welcome everyone, we're just gonna go through some of the more major legislative updates that will impact y'all. And I had gone through and like outlined them in pretty detailed, sorry, just as I start talking, I start coughing. So, y'all should have like a pretty detailed outline of what these legislative changes are. However, I'm gonna kinda summarize, I know you don't wanna mirror my, but you'll have them in, in text that you can refer to. So. Starting out, House Bill 120, on annual reports. And all this says is that each year you must approve the annual report, and it's, that's that information on high school graduates, posted secondary education, completion of degrees and certificates, that kind of information. And identifying and including goals in each plan, the board has to use longitudinal student outcomes data posted under that section. And your plan has to be on your district website, not less than two weeks after approved. So that's House Bill 120, approving your annual, annual reports and the requirements there are fine. So, we all know the last legislative session, we had a requirement that we have to have a police officer on every campus, however, a lot of districts got exceptions to that, just given the lack of officers that are unavailable in certain areas. So now, if there's good cause, we can, we can again request an exception based on some kind of good cause for why you're not able to fulfill that requirement in every district building. And, so it has to, you have to set that for, to claim an exception. House Bill 210, prohibition on certain activity by vendor, so a vendor that bids on or receives a contract from a school district or open road charter commits an offense if any individual serves on the board of trustees or governing body of the district or school, or has substantial interest. So that's not unlike previous conflict of interest requirements. This provision has just whittled it down to be more specific, but pretty much saying that you can't be a vendor bidding on a project and also have a substantial interest in both the district and the company bidding. And so it kinda separates out what, how that's defined in that bill. So, back to school police departments, your chief of police actually has the ability to appoint reserve police officers, the board is able to limit the number of reserve police that the chief can appoint. And that's under 1458. And remember, anytime we see a May, that's not a requirement, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what the board has to do, but it gives the board that flexibility to, to say that they wanna implement such a policy. This is gonna be a big one with parents, y'all. So 1481, I'm sure y'all have heard about it, the cell phones. We're prohibiting students from using a personal communication device while on school property or during the school, during the school day. That's a shell, y'all, so we have to have such a policy, it's using during the school, the school day. So, it has to establish disciplinary measures to be established for violation and confiscation, we have to have, include that into our cellphone policy. And TOSB is coming out with, if they haven't already, a plethora of supplements, Mark Tilly has kinda combed through all of these from TOSB and set forth that there's gonna be major policy updates upcoming. So that, those will, you know, at least fulfill these shells that y'all see in here. So the policy either has prohibit them from bringing it all together on school property or designate some kind of method for storage while the student is on school property during the school day. And so you either have to do one or the other completely, or this is how they're gonna be stored while on school property. We have to have something in place for how we're gonna dispose of them after notifying the parent, like with ninety days notice, okay, we have a kid's cellphone, and then how we're going to dispose of them, how we're gonna communicate to the parents that that's going to occur. There's exceptions, if a student needs it for their IDP, so I work in the special ed world a lot, I think we can expect to definitely see students coming in with changes to their IDPs or, you know, recommendations from physicians, that's that second provision there. They have to have a cellphone for some disability-based or medical-based reason, so we can prepare ourselves for that. Or necessary to comply with a health, health or safety requirement imposed by law. So not a parent saying, I believe this is mandatory for my child's health or safety, something that's mandatory requirement imposed by law or part of our own protocols. So, that, I think, could easily be twisted as well, a parent unilaterally deciding that that's needed for their own child's or their own health or safety. So, a change to TOT, this is significant, y'all. We now have to post our agenda within three business days before a meeting, not the seventy-two hours anymore. So we're looking at, like, districts that take Fridays off, you're looking at having to post Tuesday, right, Wednesday, Thursday, no Friday, Mondays in the meeting. So you're gonna have to really have your ducks in a row, include and, you know, take to heart the days off that you have in your schedules, because it's three business days now, not the seventy-two hours. And we think maybe in the next legislative session, we'll define what business days are, right? Because there's instructional days, there's district business days, like for purposes of grievances, or like, yeah, we were closed that week, so we don't count it, but then the Texas Public Information Act, the AG says we have to designate business days. So is it based on those designated business days? We don't know. So I would recommend that you take an abundance of caution approach when posting your agendas, because that's gonna require you to really get your ducks in a row, get it posted in a timely fashion, and there can't be any debate, say, if Friday is a date of closure, if you post on a Tuesday. So, those are just kind of things to think of for that. The notice must include, just very specifically, for certain budgetary items. So, adopting a budget has to have these particular things included. So just remember that that has to be, you know, that's added in addition to these posting requirements for this provision. Military kids, this is a May, we may adopt a policy, and it's very wordy, I had to read this several times before I knew what it was saying. It essentially says military people can say, hey, my kiddo's turning seven in May of this year, so I'm wanting to be in second grade. Whereas usually that child has to be seven as of September the first, right, to go into second grade. I think, I think that's correct. So, because of that, it's a May, you don't have to, but if you do, then a military person could say, you know, this child is turning that age during the school year and should be allowed into that grade. I believe that's because it's hard for military parents to have continuity from one state or even one country to the next, because some states, it's like parents choose when they start, what grade they go in. Some states, it's, you know, September first, some states it's August first, some states it's end of December. So it's hard for them to find continuity perhaps going from one place to the next with what grade their child should be in. So House Bill 3372, conflicts of interest, this is kind of a complicated bill written, you know, there again. Essentially prohibits outside work by administrators for vendors. And prohibits outside work by superintendents and assistant superintendents for curriculum and administrative service providers, so it's moonlighting, right? But you are allowed, non-superintendents, assistant superintendents, non-members of the board, they're limited, they're, they're, and this is more in the scope, I think, of like schools that are managed by members of board of managers, so they're actual employees, not board of trustees like y'all. But top-level administrators are, can't receive those financial benefits. People who are not top-level administrators can receive outside work based on the contract if they request and receive an exception from the board. So, the board has to consider and determine that the contract won't harm the district, the arrangement doesn't present a conflict of interest, and the service to be performed will be performed entirely on their personal time. And they have to really look at that before deciding, the board, whether to grant those exceptions for moonlighting. So that's, and it's kind of a significant one, if you have a lot of employees who do outside contract work. So. Oh, yeah, we have resolution forms for a lot of these things, y'all, so just ask, there's another one that's not specifically mentioned in here, but it's the bill requiring us to allow kids who are homeschooled to participate in UIL activities. Those, I believe, come to affect September first, and if you haven't made the resolution by then, then you're required to take those kids on your UIL days. So, there's a lot of reasons why we wouldn't want to, you know, we have standards-based learning, where kids have to actually do, it's the whole no pass, no play, you know, that we hold our own students to. And so, you know, the unfairness of having children, they are maybe not held to the same academic standards, just coming for purposes of UIL participation. So we also have those, those form resolutions as well, if y'all are interested. Elections, so, this bill, House Bill 3546, permits school districts to change to the November uniform election date and adjust the terms for that. So, this is kind of an extension, we've extended it to December of thirty, of thirty thirty. The board of trustees may adopt a resolution changing the length of the term of its trustees until the date of the November election is canvassed every year. And it has to provide for staggered terms, either three or four years, and specify the manner in which the transition from the length of the former term and the modified term, to the modified term, excuse me, is made. And it has to begin with the first regular election for trustees that occur after the board adopts the resolution, and a trustee who serves on the date the resolution is adopted shall serve the remainder of that term. So, there you go. And so this seems like it was something that was extended from 2023, and, and that you just have to opt in to, to making those modifications. And so the government modifies the rest of it, of an independent school district that holds its general elections for officers on the date other than the November uniform election date may change the date on which it holds its general election for officers to the November uniform election date. So that's another modification under 3546. We had in addition to the Texas Open Meetings Act where we discuss cybersecurity matters, it makes sense, because we've always been able to go into clothes to talk about security measures. So now we've added cybersecurity matters, and that's under House Bill 3112. So, that's an important one to add to your agendas if you know those matters are going to be discussed. House Bill 3629, an application for a place on the ballot as a candidate for trustee must include a statement that the candidate is aware that a person is not eligible to serve as a trustee if the person is required to register as a sex offender. These are things we'd like to think that go without saying, but y'all, I can tell you, years ago, there was a loophole in the law, that we had current felons who were serving as school board members and other elected officials. Because they just had to have had their disabilities, it's called restrictions, removed through their probation or whatever. And so because of that, they're current felons on new school boards throughout the state, and so they passed that a few years ago, where you couldn't apply for a felon. That seems, that seems like a no-brainer. Yeah, that seems like a no-brainer. So this is just another one. If you're required to register as a sex offender, you can't be a school board member. Early ballots. So this kind of dictates what the form has to be. You know, I don't know that this is all this factoring in to you. It's more of a Secretary of State issue, maybe. But at least 10-point font, printed in black text. Don't you even dare try blue text, or 12-point fonts. Actually, at least, so 9-point font. And puts restrictions on those early ballots. Polling places. We've said a person cannot use wireless communication, and there has to be that restriction posted outside of the voting, like, right outside of the room while voting is taking place. So a person can't be using their cellphone, essentially, while they're voting. This is helpful a lot of times. The penal code has been amended under House Bill 5238 to say that a person commits an offense with an intention, and this has always been the case, to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting procession or gathering. And this is the continuation of that, whether in person or virtually. So we've had all situations in, I'm not aware of a board meeting where it occurred, but I know that, for effect, it occurred in a Texas due process hearing for special ed where there were people who were hacking in and disrupting the hearing. And so that speaks to that. So electronic disturbance. We've broadened the definition of disturbing meeting to those electronic disturbances. Personal prayer. So essentially, Senate Bill 11 deals with a lot with prayer. It's never really changed much. We've just said that the board can vote and make a resolution that we're going to have an opportunity set forth in the day where people can pray. And this is how the resolution language has to specifically read here down at the bottom. And this is a May. You know, we've never been permitted, our students or our employees, from stopping what we're doing and praying during the day. So I don't know that it's, you know, a priority for your district. I guess you'll decide that. A policy has to only allow employees and students whose parents are guardian signed and sent for. So that's in the knowledge that they've made that choice to participate. They have no objection, and they waive all rights under the Establishment Clause or First Amendment, blah, 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 U.S. Constitution. So essentially, like, I voluntarily agree to participate in this prayer session, and I hereby waive any right I have to say that this state is trying to establish, you know, a particular religion for me. So it has to prohibit prayer or reading of the Bible or other religious texts over a PA system. So essentially, those that have not consented to it can't be forced to hear it and be subjected to it. So that's part of this, too. And if someone revokes their consent, like I said, or doesn't give their consent, they, you know, they don't have to be, they can't be forced to participate in it. So we have to have provisions which, that's pretty much saying that prayer is not provided in the physical presence of or within the hearing of another man or which would infringe upon their constitutional rights. So it's a pretty complex bill, and I'm not sure if it's accomplishing, like, a long-term objective that the district has because prayer's always been around, student-owned prayer. That's always been the law for as long as I've been around. So the policy may require the period of prayer, reading of the Bible or religious texts be provided before normal school hours. So you can set the parameters by which you're going to implement the policy, the windsweaters, styles, et cetera. And so the AG is supposed to provide the school board, you know, upon our request, the best practices for implementing that, if that's your decision. And again, like, there's nothing that prohibits school district employees from, you know, engaging in religious practice during the day. You know, we don't necessarily stop and have a period of time where we do that, but, you know, in their own free time during the day, they're allowed to do that. DEI, so diversity, equity, and inclusion. Pretty much we're prohibited from engaging in any type of that, including volunteers. So we can't do it. We can't knowingly allow others to do it. We can't adopt policies that allow for diversity, equity, and inclusion practices or require individuals to perform diversity, equity, and inclusion duties. And this doesn't prohibit us from conducting business with historically underutilized businesses or by members of a minority group or by women. So a company that designates themselves, you know, a black-owned company or a woman-owned company, we can do business with them. It's not like we have to not engage in business with them because they identify that way. We prohibit a district from acknowledging or teaching the significance, sorry, it's not construed to prohibit us from acknowledging or teaching the significance of state and federal holidays or commemorations and months. So we can say it's by case per month. We can say, you know, this is a holiday for women. There's a Mother's Day, a holiday for women. This is a duty and acknowledging the significance of it. We just can't require teaching the practices, you know, someone to actually teach the practices or implement policies in furtherance of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we have, nothing's limiting us from making sure we follow Students' First Amendment's rights. Of course, we should be doing that anyways and not engaging in unlawful practices. And we can engage, like, in assessing, and we do this all the time, with, like, Star School. We'll break them down by race and say, you know, these are the achievement gaps in certain classes or certain, you know, students or certain races of students or certain, you know, based on disability. So we can do that, to identify achievement gaps and try to target those gaps in our educational instruction and programming. So there you go. I think you guys get the gist of that. So SB 12, y'all, like, as we go into this, spoiler alert, there's a lot in SB 12. It's a heavy parent rights bill. It's got a lot. And there, so far, to my knowledge, there hasn't been anything saying you can't DOI out of this. And so far, I understand there's probably nothing that you really want to DOI out of. Where we want to get there, though, is at the very end, what I'm going to talk about. SB 12 included a whole overhaul of grievance procedures. Parents' rights and grievance procedures, you know, expanding the deadlines for people to file. It's going to impose quite a burden on school districts. And we know constitutionally, there's always a right to grievance, to stop, look, and listen. But there's a lot of things that have been added in that, in my estimation, can trip a district up if you miss one little step. And so SB 12 is something food for thought to DOI out of, to District of Innovation out of. And if y'all don't know what that is, District of Innovation just means we have a plan. It's a district called a District of Innovation Plan. And we can, under law, opt out of certain provisions of the Texas Education Code. This isn't something, there was quite a few in the legislature this year we're going to talk about, some that specifically stated you can't DOI out of. This is one where you can. So it's just food for thought. My districts are all considering it, mainly the part that's given policy conditions. We'll talk about that in a little bit. That part I was going to talk about, I personally feel difficult.
One second.
This is again part. Thirty days to be sworn in. And we have to annually submit to the agency information about who's the president and information about our board of trustees. Yes?
One second, we're having some technical difficulties. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I was waiting to see if there was a question. And I can answer those at the end, too, if y'all need. So anti-transitioning. So we kept to adopt a policy that we can't assist students with social transitioning, so not just gender reassignment, but, like, we can't assist the student with social transitioning, meaning last year, Mark was Mark, and this year, Mark wants to be Mary. And so that's going to be interesting. We've always, as districts, kind of had it be a local policy decision or a local practices decision if we're going to informally refer to a student as Mary and she. So that's kind of going to be, I think, up to the district. I think this is a little more specific, that we can't assist them, assist being the keyword there, in their social transition. Parental rights. So a Board of Trustees can't limit parental rights. I don't know that you'd ever want to do that. But we're supposed to, in doing that, provide for procedures to consider complaints that a parent's rights have been denied. In my opinion, we've already done that with our FNG policies and other policies, like our harassment and bullying policies. But I feel like that's covered. We're supposed to develop a plan for parental participation in the district to improve parent and teacher cooperation, including in the areas of homework, attendance, and discipline. And we're supposed to cooperate in the establishment of ongoing operations of at least one parent-teacher organization, so PTA, PTA. So one and three are pretty well-covered. I feel like two is probably covered, too, like, at your campus level at least. But just so you know, that's, we're supposed to be developing a plan as a board for that. I'm huge, this is in this legislative session, every legislative session has something that emphasizes this is a project this year. We're supposed to provide to parents for the first.
Sorry, one more time, it's.
Karen B?
Yeah, there you go.
Evan? Sorry, I don't know if I'm coming out, but.
No, it's on the left now.
We're supposed to. Okay, we're supposed to provide to parents, you know, notice of their rights, that they have options concerning all of these things. Y'all can read them there at the bottom, but it's literally all the things we do with students in instruction and the school day, immunizations, all of these types of things. So most of us do most of these things in enrollment, in my opinion. But if there's anything in there that we are, you know, that's the whole thing, is it says on their enrollment. So I don't know that we, like, talk about GT on their enrollment. We certainly talk about immunizations. So you may just go through this list and just consider it for purposes of making sure you complain, if you're not going to opt out and DOI. You can opt out of certain parts of SB 12, too. That's the other thing, because you don't want to opt out of all of it. Like this one. A parental engagement policy, you have, you know, provide for an internet portal for which parents enrolled may submit comments to district. Administrators require support and prioritize public comments, by presenting those comments at the beginnings of each board meeting, and requires board meetings to be held outside of typical work hours. That can be problematic, number three, to say you're going to do that forever and ever till the end of all time, amen. Because you have things come up, as y'all know, all the time, where it may be outside of, well, it's typical work hours for anyone. So, you know, that is a consideration there. Obviously, important to incorporate parents in our overall engagement plans. And I know y'all do that. But just specifically comply with some of these things may be food for thought for how you're going to modify that with your DOI.
Can you ask her the question?
Grievances. This is what I really wanted to.
One second.
Do you have a question on SB 12? Okay.
What was the question?
The question, I've heard the typical work hours has been stated as being kind of like nine to five, or eight to three, or whatever. Does she have a typical work hours?
Me, or she?
We were wondering, the typical work hours is a nine to five or eight to four. Do you have a specific work hours that you're talking about, what the question was?
Yeah, that's kind of the point I was thinking, too, is like, what is the typical work hours? We've expanded through the years. We used to, you know, nine to five and an hour for lunch. Well, that's a joke for most of us. So, you know, I would say maybe eight to five, I'd guess. But I don't know that it's defined. So that's where it gets kind of hairy because, you know, it's just, like, I had this happen this year. We had to do a non-renewal of an employee. Well, the only time all the board members could do it, unfortunately, they were going to have to miss work, was nine o'clock in the morning, because these hearings can last six hours. And so we did it. If you had something like this, you know, it would restrict that. And so it's just time in your hands of when you can, you know, when you can actually hold these meetings. So food for thought. Grievances to all this, where it gets really hairy. And so I don't know that I'm going to go through and enumerate piece by piece all the things that this incorporates. But remember, there's nothing in SB 12 that says this section 26011, we can't DOI out of it. So I would consider it, and just sticking with your FNG, GF, PGVA policies as written, they certainly afford, you know, members of the public, parents, employees, the right of remonstrance, which means to be heard, to come before your body corporate, which is, in this case, the Board of Trustees, and area grievances. And so to put all of these new requirements on us, I think is onerous with all that is going on already. I don't think it's required from a constitutional standpoint. So that's the thing, is I, there's nothing in this yet. The commissioner, I guess, can always, the commissioner can't really, I don't think, say that we can't DOI out of these things, only the legislature can. And I don't think the legislature has. They may at one day, but I don't think they have based on the writing of this statute. So y'all can read it, and you're lucky, I'm not going to go over every single thing. But it has heightened rules for the record, you know, for the, who's going to hear these grievances. It pretty much shakes up the entire grievance structure as we know it. And so, like I said, our grievance structure, as written already, affords a parent, the comp, or whoever, a constitutional right to be heard by the Board of Trustees, all the way up to the Board of Trustees. So that's just food for thought. And until we know whether we're going to adopt this or we're going to DOI out of it, you know, I don't know that it's worthy of spending tons and tons of time. And it is a lot of slides, y'all can review it. But it increases the time when someone can bring a complaint. You know, right now, most of our policies in May, almost policy is written. I think it's 15 district business days, you have to file agreements. Well, now we've way expanded that, and I'll listen to it. And so, and lots of, like, 20 days here, 60 days here, 30 days here. So it's a lot of ways to trip ourselves up by putting a lot of restrictions on ourselves. So we already have the 10th day where we hold the hearing when it's not before the school board. This kind of expands our timeline here, but it's a different time, it's different timelines than what we have. Also, currently, we don't have any set time where we have to set a hearing before the school board, and this sets that timeline. So currently, under the policies that we have, there's no timeline. It's just whenever the school board can hear it next. Of course, we want to make a good faith effort to hear it timely and deal with our complaints in a timely, you know, integrity-filled way. But, you know, we've always been able to have some flexibility for how we can set our meetings, and this kind of takes that away. So there you go. You can kind of read through it. It's a whole lot of, it's just completely up in some grievance policies. You know, and adding more times that conferences have to occur, it's a lot, I think. And it could be expensive and certainly, like, a lot of district resources to put it together. So that's that. And there, again, like, it may be something to just talk about and see whether it fits your district's needs or whether you want to include it in your District of Innovation Plan. So this is the School Library Advisory Council. And we can, there's a May, establish a SLAC, as if we don't have enough committees and such. But it's just pretty much to review and ensure that the library standards are met. And so there's different requirements put on it. It should just choose to implement such a council. But it kind of just talks through how, you know, the members who are going to be included in the library council. And this is a shell. So when we acquire materials, including procedures for procurement of library materials and the receipt of donated library materials, the board has to have a procedure for approving library materials that have been donated or procured by a district library with the advice and recommendations of any SLEC. Make the list of library materials not described accessible for review. Approve or reject the list of library materials that have been donated or proposed to be procured by a school library. or proposed to be procured by a school library in an open meeting and ensure compliance with the library standards approved. So all of that is acquisition of our instructional materials that we're going to have to address. And each school board is entitled to review each list of library materials that have been donated to or that are proposed to be procured by a school library in the district and propose changes to the list. And the school board shall approve or reject a list of library materials that have been donated or proposed to be procured by a school library at the first open meeting. The board help honor after the 30th day, after the date the list is made accessible for review. So we have to do a timely review and approval or rejection of the list. So that is going to be additional, you know, board, board requirements that we're going to want to make sure to fulfill. The trustees have to complete a state board of education or TEA, parents' rights training. And the TEA has to create a parental rights handbook that we're going to incorporate into all of our handbooks. It's just pretty much setting out what parents' rights are in the state of Texas for school, for public school students. So this is a new Senate Bill 413, under TMA, Texas Open Meetings Act. We have to approve minutes as follows, and it has to have all of these components. So board secretary, take down attendance out or absence from the meeting for each member. Each member's vote on any item that is voted on by the board at the meeting. The board shall make a recording of each regular or special meeting of the board. Y'all have already transitioned into that, is my understanding. The minutes and recording of an open meeting must be accessible to the public. And we shall post on the district's internet website, the minutes. And seven days after the meeting in which the board approves, not seven days after meeting for which the minutes were taken. So seven minutes after the meeting in which the board approves. District's minutes, and they haven't been updated since like January of '24 or something. We want to be timely with this, since it's required now. Any resolution adopted by board, resolutions approved must be placed on the website within seven days of their approval. So that's important. Buses, so it's pretty much like a safety report to TEA that, that, you know, discusses each of our buses and whether they're equipped with seatbelts. Two-point seatbelts, three-point seatbelts, and estimated cost to the district to equip them with three-point seatbelts. And so the end of the '25, '26 school year, that's when we have to do that. If we waive seatbelt requirements on buses. So typically, these are buses that are older in their commission, I believe, or transportation, people would know this better than me. But if you waive seatbelt requirements, that's why you have to provide this information to TEA. Essentially, how many of our buses don't have it and what it would take, what it would cost to equip them. At least once a year, the school board or charter shall include during a public meeting a discussion of the performance of students receiving special ed services. So that's SB 568. So this is a Texas Public Information Act issues special rights and access. Any board member acting in their capacity is allowed to have, I don't believe this has changed. I mean, they've always been allowed to pretty much have any document in the district. That doesn't mean that we otherwise waive privacy requirements. We can request, hey, board member, will you please sign, sign this confidentiality agreement not to reveal confidential FERMA information or things like that. If a board member declines to do that, then we can...
There we go.
Can appeal it to the AG, so they can say, no, I don't want to, and here's why. Hopefully, a board member wouldn't be inclined to do that. I think y'all have the best intentions to keep things confidential, confidential. But that is, you know, an option. It's essentially saying the board members aren't restricted in the information that they can have. So ballots, it's another ballot format requirement. I thought this was interesting, the statement, this is a tax increase, has to be included where applicable. And for purchasing, we've now increased the threshold amount to trigger competitive purchasing requirements. It used to be 50,000, and now Senate Bill 1173 has increased that value to 100,000. So taxes, this Senate Bill 1502 essentially prohibits the adoption of disaster pennies and the tax rate after a bad trade, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, fails in the same tax year. Taxes certainly not my forte. I understand y'all have specific questions about how appropriately to election or, you know, not engage in illegal electioneering or promote a tax, tax rate, you know, initiative. But, but this Senate Bill 1502 kind of speaks to some of that. We can't adopt a tax rate under subsection E for a tax year in which the governing body previously adopted a tax rate that exceeded the district's voter-approved tax rate and election was held for the purpose of determining whether to approve the district's adopted tax rate. And the proposition to approve the district's adopted tax rate was not approved by the voters at the district at the election. So that's essentially without saying that we, you know, whenever, that whenever it has failed in the same tax year. Now, these are important just for a basic fundamental knowledge, I think, for board members. I don't think it'll, you know, this is the day-to-day stuff for your administrators. But I think just, these were significant bills that came out of the legislative year that I think would be important for y'all to at least have some fundamental awareness of. So House School 6, pretty much upended discipline. And these are issues that could come to you and appeal eventually. So we can adopt a policy for parental involvement, school disciplinary placements. It's not going to be required. That's going to kind of be something that your administration will probably make a recommendation on. But we have expanded reasons and restricted, and restricted the procedure that teachers can use to remove students from their classroom. So I would say just to find it a little bit closer. There's always been a procedure for teachers to remove kids who are unduly disruptive or assaulting them or assaulting others. And there's always been mechanisms for that and in a way for us to consider whether that child should remain removed. So that's kind of what that speaks to. We've expanded the reasons the students can be given out-of-school suspension. DAAP is no longer required for possessing or using an e-cigarette. But we have put into place, I think the ISS will pretty much be required. But we had this problem years ago where we had a hard and fast rule about an e-cigarette regardless of what was in it, right? Like, nothing's in it, it's just an e-cigarette. We have to put them in DAAP, and that was backlogging a lot of our DAAPs. So that's, it's still an option, but it's not always required. And I think something we talked about in our firm is we're going to have to look at just the apparatus of the e-cigarette versus what's in the e-cigarette. Because there's obviously required removals if there's illegal drugs in there versus nicotine versus some, something that's not illegal. So all of those things, I think, will be taken into consideration. And it's not just a hard and fast rule of if you have an e-cigarette, regardless of what's in it, you know, you have to put it in DAAP. And we've added reasons for student expulsion in emergency DAAP. So I will say, we've stepped in and kind of tightened up disciplinary procedures. I think there's been a lot of things in the media of students being abusive to staff members and the legislatures kind of taking note. So there has been kind of a switch in our legislatures', you know, viewpoint on some of these things. This is helpful for a lot of districts. Students can now be placed in a virtual expulsion program. We have these problems of like, well, what do we do with these kiddos if we're expelling them and we don't have a JJAP in our county? Can we virtually educate them? Now, it's going to take, I think, some commissioners' rules on whether this can be implemented in a DAAP setting. Or you can put kiddos to by heart for DAAP, which comes up a lot. I think that'll be interesting to kind of see how the commissioner comes up with his regulations on this. TEA can't limit funding based on student discipline data. That's significant, because there's always been incentives for students to not discipline, because it's tied into their funding. So that prohibits that. Written assessment team for sped student must include a person with knowledge of the student's disabilities. I think that's always heard unofficially, but that's an official requirement. And written parental consent required for health, mental health services certified. That's always been the case, in my opinion. So this is significant, y'all. I have a case right now, that's just the case that will never end, about reporting, reporting, you know, educator misconduct. And so House School 4623 is probably one of the most instrumental, instrumental to districts or significant, I guess, I would say, to districts that passed this legislative session. Essentially, it's saying that anyone that fails to report or engages in negligent, grossly negligent, reckless, or intentional hiring, supervising, or employing of an employee can be liable. So that individual principal or superintendent would be added to a lawsuit. And that individual waives their immunity. So that is significant. We've always said, if you sue us in state court for negligence, then we are immune unless that individual engaged in some kind of negligent discipline of a child or negligent supervision of a child. Well, now, this bill specifically weighs immunity for those cases, which is significant. Background checks are more important than ever. That said, y'all, I've never, I've never come across a case in my career, I can say confidently, where we did not background check someone who later came out to be a sex offender. It wasn't like, oops, we didn't background check, check the sex offender. You had a long, you know, laundry list of offenses. It's always the first time, never been in trouble, who knows how long they've been doing it, that person. So I can't really say that, you know, well, now we really have to crack down. I think it's important to do ongoing checks. I know a lot of districts who will do weekly, if not daily, checks of has anyone in our employ hit our, hit the, you know, the crimes list, like he committed a crime recently. So ongoing checks may be important, I would say. Continuing to employ people who, say, would, with a simple check, pop up on a, on a sex offender list. And so that may be more important than anything, because I don't think any district is really guilty of not background checking. There may be some, none that I'm aware of. It's always, and the news comes out as people who are, are sex offenders, who've probably been doing it forever without ever being caught. So the superintendent has to notify us if there's evidence that the educator abused or otherwise committed an unlawful act with a student, involved in a solicited or solicited a romantic relationship, engaged in inappropriate communications. This is where I start to fall off, because it's definitely the eye of the beholder. Failed to maintain appropriate boundaries. So a lot of the times, these cases are, we see in hindsight. So, yes, when Mr. So-and-so touched a student's hand, in hindsight, he was a big creep. In hindsight, he's a sex offender. In hindsight, we wanted him far away from our children. But that act in and of itself, in the old days, wasn't a reportable educator misconduct or reportable abuse. So I think that's going to be dicey, and I think they're going to be inundated with a lot of reports, because everything could potentially not maintain appropriate boundaries. A student's having a hard day and they initiate a hug with a educator certainly could be an indication of inappropriate boundaries or no malattions at all. And how do we know? Until we know. So, so that's kind of interesting. We've now added service providers. And so we want to make sure we're background checking our service providers who are providing services on our campuses before they're allowed access to or near or around our children. I think that's been occurring anyways, as a, as a rule. Principal has to report to superintendent. We've now increased, it used to be seven business days, it's now $48. And superintendent has to report to ESPEC within 48 hours of any educator misconduct. And parent as soon as feasible, ASAP, right away, don't wait. Not this district, but I have districts in the past who are like, yeah, I'm happy, three o'clock on a Friday. So we didn't really think much of it until Monday. That's not timely reporting. They will be out of compliance. And that's important that we, as a board, know and encourage. This is significant as well. People having a reasonable cause to believe a child's been abused or neglected, used to be a 48-hour requirement. It's now a 24-hour requirement for a district employee. That is significant, very significant. So as board members in a somewhat small town, we always say rumor mill is enough. You hear Mr. So-and-so is having an inappropriate relationship with Johnny. We don't say, oh, that could really ruin someone's life, we don't want to get involved in that. Rumor mill is enough in these cases. Your superintendent's job and all of your administrator's jobs and liberties depend upon it. Your liberties as board members depend upon it. Obviously, the student being abused is the first and foremost concern, and we want to act immediately on those. So just know, it's like a yesterday requirement now. There is no sit back and wait and ponder and consider, go on, weekend. So that is it as far as the legislative updates. Mr. Bowlen can ask that I talk a little bit about voter approval, tax rate, election. Does anyone have anything they want to raise with me up till there? Okay. So hopefully that all makes sense and you have your resources, you know, that I provided you, that you can refer, go back and refer to. So if a school board has attached...
Sorry, we have one question.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Are there any recommendations for keeping cell phones put up? I've seen some things where there are like bags and things like that, that they keep them in the school. Just curious if there's anything that's recommended.
Are there any recommendations on where to keep cell phones?
You know, I think like, the commissioner may be coming out with some of those in his regulations. TASB often has those, like, here's some Q and A's and recommendations for what you, how you can implement this. As to TEA. For me, I'm like, I don't know if the answer is, we go, you know, securing them is one thing. Like storing them is one thing, securing them and making sure that it gets stolen during the day is another. You know, I don't know if it's like, we just go simple and have like a sleeve that they put it in. But again, my concern is securing them. So I don't have a great answer for that. I would think like your administrators have better, more innovative ideas than your school lawyer does. And I haven't heard any recommendations. Of course, our legislature discusses these things, they don't have a good recommendations. But I haven't heard any recommendations from the powers that be. But that is something that I'm sure is being discussed in superintendent trainings and, and, you know, if we put our heads together, we can think about it. And, you know, the other option is just to ban them all together from, from being out during the school day or being, you know, being, from being out and used during the school day. So that's the other alternative, if you don't want to be responsible for holding them.
You can go talk to ask her over just a second.
So it's kind of an answer, we don't have a great recommendation. And I, I know, like, I've heard school employees be like, yeah, we, we have teachers who have like a sleeve and each kid puts them in their sleeve. Of course, our legislators know how smart our kids are, and they bring burner phones to put in the sleeve so they can use their real phone all day. So this is going to be a battle for us. So I don't know if some administrators think it's cleaner just to ban them all together? That it's not like the constant battle, if I see it, it's mine, you know? So that's just something for your administration to come all over.
Okay, then we have one more question.
Okay.
Well, did you want to make one statement?
I, I spoke with Tazby, I'm doing a training with him this week. But as it stands right now, unless the commissioner comes out with additional guidance, it's, it's either ban them completely, where they can't have them at all, or like Andrea said, that they're out of sight. And out of sight can be, in a, in a secure location can be in their own backpack, as, as what Tazby's saying right now, unless something comes out differently from the commissioner. But then it's, but then it's coming up with the guidelines. That'll be in the student code of conduct that we've been bringing to the board and need one to be back on. But it, it would, and there we would have to state, just like she's mentioned, the discipline, the consequences, then how would we secure it if we take it up? That, you know, if, if...
Can all your whistle?
Yeah, yeah, it's more of a...
So make sure I didn't break connection or something.
But what they're saying is that right now, the way they're interpreting it, and most districts are going to interpret it just because of the sheer, you know, if you have to put them in the lock bags and you have to have an employee every morning to help take all these phones up and then register them at the end of the day and all of this. It's going to be, if we make the decision, the board makes the decision as a district, that they can have them. if the board makes the decision as a district, that they can have them with them, that unless the state says something different, it can be, the secure location can be on their person, but it can, they cannot ever have them out. And so some districts are choosing just to say, can't have them at all. But then if they do have them, it's the same thing.
Makes a problem I didn't before happen, for some kids.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, is it says on school property during the school day.
During the school day, that's right.
Is that just during instructional hours?
That's the way, that's the way that Tazby's interpreted that, is during instructional hours. But again, this week, I think we'll get some more guidance with that. But that's the way they're interpreting it, is during what we're calling instructional time, which include athletics if it's within our seven fifty
Will that include lunch?
Yes, sure does. It includes passing periods, it includes everything. Once they walk in that building.
First bell at the last bell.
That's right, that's right. And I'm going to, and, and Mr. Smith, I, I hope we'll even get some guidance. I'm almost thinking they're going to say, once we open the doors for the morning, because otherwise, but we'll get, hopefully get some clarity on that.
My cousin works at a, at a high speed towards the admin office. She said she can give me her policy of the beginning of the last couple of years.
We already have in our policy that our students are not to have cell phones out, and no earbuds, no headphones. So we've already stepped ahead for two years, and they're not supposed to have them out or have them in use. So it's just making, we want to make them additional law determinations.
All right, move on?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I was waiting for a question. Was it, there wasn't any more questions, or we're good?
We're good.
Uh, we're good, thank you.
Okay. So, if voter approval tax rate election, if a school board adopts a tax rate that exceeds its voter approval tax rate, it must hold a voter approval tax rate election for the voters of the district to approve that rate. Unless disaster exceptions discussed below apply, we have to conduct an efficiency audit before holding that election. So these are your deadlines, selecting an auditor four months before, three months before. We have to complete the audit, thirty days before, we have to post the results of the audit and conduct the meeting. And then, it has to be held on a uniform election date. And the deadline to order an election on a uniform election date is not later than the seventy-eighth day before the election day. So that's just kind of procedural, more procedural. We have to adopt the budget and tax rate before ordering the election. And all other deadlines and requirements of the elections code, of course, apply to that type of election. And this is kind of, the ballot has to permit for and against the proposition. And this is kind of the language that's to be used. And it sets forth what the increase in the percentage rate in maintenance and operation, tax revenue under the adopted tax rate versus the preceding tax year, as well as that dollar amount. So that's your ballot issues. So if a majority of the vote cast in an election favor the proposition to approve the rate, the tax rate for the current year is the rate adopted by the board. If it's not approved, the board may not adopt a rate that exceeds the district's V A T R number. So that's the procedures and your deadlines. As far as promoting or at least like dispersing information on these things, these are the elections codes and the education code provisions that are germane to the issue. So, an officer or an employee of a school district can't knowingly spend or authorize the spending of public funds for political advertising. So you can't, in your scope as a board member, or, you know, using district property during board meetings, be promoting measures, like political measures. Things that are going to, you're advocating the passage of, or you're saying, everyone vote for this particular initiative. Now, this does not apply to communication that just factually describes the purposes of a measure if the communication doesn't advocate passage or defeat the measure. So we have focus groups or people who include board members that just disperse the information broadly, but aren't necessarily advocating for the passage or the defeat of a measure. So that would be safe communication. And we know where the education code, there's a further, you know, provision that says, again, you can't use state or local funds to election, election year for, in this case, a measure, a politi, you know, some kind of political action. And so, that's the important parts to realize when you're discussing this with the public, is you want to make very sure that, you know, you're not using district funds, time, money, your scope as a board member, your influence as a board member, you're not, wouldn't put yourself in a position where you're pushing, promoting any kind of measure. It's more of an informational, these are, you know, this is the purpose, factual, and not persuasive scope.
So like in our bond, we sent out a little thing that was just information. I can, it was two, three, we love mailers. And ours were just strictly only the facts. And the, the other group, they sent out information.
You can also hear me?
Yes, ma'am, does y'all have any
Okay, great. Good. All right, well, that's what I have for that portion. Unless there's questions or
Yeah, we'll see.
Anything hard that?
Instructions or headed DOI stuff.
Andrea, the question was, is will you give us instructions on what can and can't be DOI'd?
I'm sorry, can you speak a little bit?
What things can be DOI'd and what cannot? Will you send us some
Yes. So I have a great article that one of my associates wrote that kind of talks about the things, and I'll forward that to Mr. Bowlin, the things that specifically can't be DOI'd out of, one of them is it changes to chapter thirty-seven, cannot be DOI'd out of, but there were several others in this legislative session. And then he discusses some that, like, cynical twelve, where there wasn't a specific provision saying you can't. So I will actually send that right now. And there may be others which we can, like, we can discuss one by one. But Tyler's article was really good on just kind of covering the most, you know, the most significant bills this legislative session on that topic.
Any other questions? Okay, well, I think we're good. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank y'all so much. Y'all ready to sign off?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
So in, in your packets, you have this, which you can follow along. Are y'all going to put it up there?
Can you go to stand next to him?
All right. So you should have your packet, and you can follow along with that or on the screens. There's going to be some additional pages in your packet that we'll get to. So we just wanted to start the discussion with you guys on, like, what the cost to homeowners could look like. And so, when we talk about that, we're looking at M and O compressed tax rate from T E A. They give us basically what our M and O compressed rate is. And then, we've previously adopted tier-two pennies that were allowable without a voter election.
So those
And M and O is our maintenance and operation, and that's what pays all the bills. INS is the
The debt, yeah, interest and sinking debt. So the previously adopted tier-two pennies is five pennies that the board has already adopted in the past that continue on, and those do not, did not need a voter election back when those were adopted. And so those continue on. We have the INS tax rate, which is the interest in sinking, and that's only allowable for debt payments. We also look at the homestead exemption, which, you know, this year is up for an increase, a forty thousand dollar increase, which we always anticipate that's going to pass by the voters.
That's, I believe, a constitutional amendment that's going to the voters and
It'll go in the liberal election, yeah. So if it passes, though, then that takes effect this tax year, or property taxes. And then we look at the average macro home value, which for our purposes, we've been using three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then you can see on the right side, the formula that we use. So you take your taxable value, divide it by a hundred, because your tax rate is per hundred dollars of home value. And then you times that by the total tax rate.
When we do the average macro home value, is that macro ISD home value or macro value?
Macro ISD, I would guess, I mean.
Well, we'll get a more defined number.
Yeah, this is coming just from me, it's not necessarily from the appraisal district on the average home value. It's just more for purposes of looking at the formulas, yeah.
When we get, when we get to that, we get the end results from the
We get certified results from the appraisal district July twenty-fifth. But historically, it's been a couple days after that, the past two years, so.
Then we can look at statistical data as far as, you know, it's the average. Probably have some of that data already, but we'll, we'll get more data as far as that, that process. It always amazes me that they still say three fifty or maybe more. Look at If you go throughout three fifty, yeah, there's just not a lot of
There's a big difference between the ISD or the C limits.
It's just all from the ISD.
So I'm going to have to kind of come up, because I'm banned, I can't hear y'all whenever I'm
Oh? How's that?
So if we look at this first example, that we're looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, just so that way we can look at comparisons to the tax effects with proposed payers. And so, twenty-four, twenty-five years, our M and O rate was sixty-one, sixty-nine cents. We had the five pennies, and then our INS rate was three zero nine seven. And then, the homestead exemption was a hundred thousand. And then, we're looking at the average macro home value, three hundred and fifty K. And so, the total tax rate there is ninety-seven point six six cents. And so, the formula, you would see, gives us basically a tax bill for the ISD portion of the taxes at two thousand four hundred and forty-one fifty. And then if we look at proposing a three golden penny increase, this is what we're looking at for a compressed M and O rate this year, is going to be point five eight seven zero. And then, we still have the five pennies, and then our INS rate remain the same at point three zero nine seven. The homestead exemption is going to increase, we're just going to anticipate that it does pass the election. And so it would go up to a hundred and forty thousand. So that average macro home value, three hundred and fifty thousand, with the applied homestead exemption, we go down to two hundred and ten thousand for total taxable value. And then if we added additional three golden pennies, our tax rate is really close to what it was this past year, at point nine seven six seven. So we were at point nine seven six six. But you can see with that extended homestead exemption, then with that tax rate, the total tax bill still goes down, it goes down to two thousand fifty-one seven cents. So a reduction by three hundred and ninety dollars. Now, if we look at three golden and three copper pennies, you can see what that does to the total tax rate at the bottom, that's just that one point zero zero six seven. And then, on the formula side, you know, still taking all the things else into consideration, the tax bill turns into two thousand one fourteen oh seven, still a reduction by three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And so, one other thing we wanted to just mention with those options, those estimates, we would need to talk with our financial advisor, Jeff Robert from Hilltop Securities, but there is possibility to reduce the INS rate as well. That's the money that we get to pay for our debt. He would have to confirm that we would be able to make our debt payment with whatever we would set that to. But I think as low as twenty-seven cents is what he was initially anticipating. But if we do that, the reason we keep that at a stable thirty ninety-seven is so that way we can continue to defuse our bonds and pay early. And that reduces the tax burden on the taxpayers in the future.
That, you had it presented last time, you were moving seven of the penny or like penny shuffling. Right, he essentially was talking about taking that three pennies off there, but back to the six up here. So you're essentially giving the, the ninety-seven cents, but what you're doing is you're taking the compression plus the three pennies off of your INS, which gives you a total of six. But you're adding six pennies back here, that's basically what you're doing. See, like, if you're returning the best, but the INS side wasn't as high as And, and your copper pennies are not going to get you as much as, you're talking the gold pennies, I'll, I'll talk about it.
What you also get with defusing your bonds early though on the INS side is building your borrowing capacity. And so that's why we do that, just in the future, if we want to go out for another bond, the more we can pay down now of what we're existing, you know, paying off of.
It saves the taxpayer from the mortgage, it's just like any kind of mortgage here, sooner you pay it down, less you So can you explain, I feel like I'm five, like he was wanting to shuffle this. He was trying to get you to that one million dollar.
So essentially, I mean, like, we could, like with this one, if we wanted to shave off the three pennies on the INS side, we wouldn't be paying off any debt early.
Sure.
But we would be essentially still reducing that total tax rate down to what we were this year, nine seven seven six.
If all of that paid out debt, you would have to have a bond.
So I just wanted to create some options for you guys, so that you guys can see what all
They'll explain these more than I'll
So the option one would be to add the three golden pennies to the M and O rate. Now, it'd give us roughly, this is all, you know, just estimates, it's not hard numbers. But seven hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and five thousand of that would go towards anticipated budget deficit that we're going to have. The way things are looking right now, it's not a huge deficit, but that hundred and five thousand would go towards that. And then six hundred and forty-five thousand would be a realignment of staff pay scales and additional staff raises and new positions that are listed here.
Do you know about how much those raises are? Is there an approximate on that number?
Like
In what way? For teachers, for administrators, is there like a I guess Do you know like how much?
Yeah, it's
Yeah, it's all in your packet, we're going to be getting it, yeah.
Sorry.
No, of course.
So we'll go through the options and we'll come back to
So to continue on option one, we have two hundred and one staff roughly currently this year. So sixty-two point two percent is exempt, thirty-seven point eight percent is non-exempt. With this option of the Vader adding three additional spots to a hundred and four staff, and it doesn't really change the percentage much on the exempt, non-exempt. With this option, we'd be putting four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars towards exempt staff and then two hundred thousand towards non-exempt staff increases. And just as a reminder, exempt staff is salary And just as a reminder, exempt staff is salary professionals that typically have contracts, and they're exempt from overtime pay. Non-exempt are your hourly at will employees that are subject to overtime pay for any hours over forty in a work week. Now, just for another option, option two would be more than even. Evening out of the three golden pennies, so still the same three golden pennies, but just allocating it differently. Two hundred and fifty thousand to the exempt staff, two hundred and fifty thousand to non-exempt staff. And then two hundred and fifty thousand to those added positions, and then whatever's left, go towards that budget deficit.
Just clarification on the exempt versus non-exempt. So teachers are exempt, right, we got admin.
Like exempts?
Right, so if they're non-exempt, they're gonna be like.
They're like your paraprofessionals, this, that, and this, basements.
Your campus admin, like your campus secretaries are gonna be cafeterias, bus drivers.
Yeah, for sure, no, for sure, like just for clarity sake, if somebody's watching on YouTube, I want to make sure. They understand what we're talking about.
Option three, we have, this is kinda if you wanted to go at a different approach with the three golden pennies for this year. And, you know, when we have to adopt the budget. In August, if y'all wanted to say, we're just gonna, if this Vader passes. That five hundred of that, five hundred thousand of the additional pennies. Yield, we're gonna give towards a retention stipend this year, which would be just blanket twenty five hundred to full time. Twenty, or twelve fifty to part time, paid out in July. And then basically, the following year after that, those realignments and the salary increases would take effect.
We, we went into a training last, I think it was last year, they started from the beginning. For Doug Williams came out and he said, one of the things that they did in some of the ISD was, is rather than approving two separate budgets. And, and all that, he said if they did, when they, when they got the Vader passed. It was this option three kinda thing was what they passed. So that they can go, okay, we're gonna use some of this money to give, retain folks, cause you already kinda have your staff for that school year, right? So you're, you're trying to retain them, so you're giving them, you're saying, hey, look, you stay, you're getting this retention bonus. Or, or stipend, excuse me. And then for the next year, you're building all of those, that, that money in for the salary piece. So that they get all of that piece, and then that two hundred and fifty was basically for any additional positions that are added during that school year. Or also affecting any kind of budget deficit, trying to reduce the budget deficit. So he said that's kinda how they did it that first year, and then the second year, you build all of that in. Isn't it's kind of a two, they get the money, I mean, the staff's getting money. And, and, and they're incentivized to go, help, help us with that piece. But the other side of that is, it's not built into their salary for that one year. The other side of that is, is you can approve, whether, whether it's option one or two, or this option four that y'all talked about. You can approve to essentially two budgets, so to speak. And with one of them can be if the election passes. The issue you run into is, okay, now you gotta go back and retroactively pay people. For there, it wasn't September, October, of course, that election's early in November, so it shouldn't hurt November so much. But you're retroactively going back and paying some of that, that amount. Or, or coming up with some kinda system to do that. So there's, there's no real wrong answer there, it's just, that's two different ways.
And then an option four would be if we wanted to go for the six pennies, which would be three golden and three copper. And that would get us the estimated one million dollar yield. Hundred and five of that's still going towards that anticipated budget deficit, and then six hundred and forty five thousand still going to those additional staff. Pieces, but then just using what's left of that, the two hundred and fifty thousand, to build up the unbalance again.
I wanna go towards, I think, you guys suggested.
Kind of taking y'all, y'all's lead on that additional.
And that's this cost here, that's, this one probably never happened. The three golden, three copper.
Right.
That's what gives the million dollars.
So can, can I jump in or am I gonna miss you? So if you go into option one, and you're looking at salaries, if you go back here at the back. These, so what they've done is, is they've, they've shown you essentially what the salaries as the annual amount will be. For the twenty five, twenty six, and then the Vader proposed amount would be outside it. That's for the option one. And so you can kinda go by, there's the teacher's salary, so starting salary for this next year would be. It is forty eight thousand eight hundred, but this would bump it up to fifty two thousand six fifty. And then you can go on over across, and you can see the different folks, classifications of folks. What this is basically based upon is because of their days of work, is that right? Yeah, hundred ninety seven, and so you can see the different salary amounts. Really, you take that depth, that data, it's the salary amount, it's just expanded upon by the amount of days. And then going into the next piece. But you get over here where it's the red line across, you see the minimum midpoint to maximum. What we're trying to get to is, is kind of achieving two goals by the piece that we put together. And, and distribute to most of us, or if you put all of this together, you're looking at a, a system where we're going to be very, very competitive. With even some of, we're getting closer to our four eights and the five eights now, but what it also does is, is it sets us up with a pay structure. And now we can start to have a percentage off of our bill. Because now we have the, the alignment, right, where we can start saying, hey, let's just do a percentage off of the midpoint from here. Rather than recreating the will every year, which is kinda what we've been in a pattern. A while, just trying to catch up with other schools based on our ability. It, it's a, it's an expensive piece to get in place, but it also, but that's where we're wanting to go, is trying to get more competitive. For the teachers and our educators, and, and get, and then also supporting our non-exempt staff and increasing their salaries as well. You can see, we'll see where the starting rates and what the max could be. But it helps us achieve two goals, being competitive, but then also giving us a, a structure that we're now. We can do a percentage off of that. Is there anything else that I need to share with that, and say that right?
So the one side is what the, the current salary scale is gonna be for twenty five, twenty six, and then this is what it would look like if the Vader were to. If we were to go with option one. And then, just so you guys know, like the midpoint is gonna be around fifteen years of service, and max point can be around thirty years of service.
If you go back to that back tab, tab four, we'll see the last year's grand view. I'm gonna tell you a lot of the school districts have it listed out. But we have last year's, so they start where they started off, into that. And, and then what they're doing as far as monthly insurance, we're doing a hundred dollars more. As far as that, and our starting salary is already as well. But, but where they guide us is when we get into a couple of years in.
I think year five is when they catch up to us and start passing us.
And so then when you go over to Waukesha Hatchet, you can hear, you see their starting salary. Fifty four, six, so with the Vader, we did fifty two, we were fifty two, six. So we're getting real close. And so, and that's with a very large district, that doesn't mean they don't raise theirs, but that gets us a lot closer. Actually, our teacher, the thing is, is they're a larger district, so they get a little bump, but then it gets a bigger bump. In those other, yeah, and those, I'm sure it's like, those, uh, years of service.
Yeah, they got twenty five and five thousand.
So there is, there is actually has theirs listed out for what they're doing with this new HP two stuff, so. You can see theirs, they're giving us six percent increase in those first three steps. And then the required four thousand and eight thousand for the rest. We also have Venus ISD's twenty five, twenty six schedule, they're on the four day. Week though, so that has to be taken into consideration. And then we were unsure if their teacher's salary schedule for twenty five, twenty six. That they have posted is the one that actually has the requirements for HP two, because it doesn't really look like it is. They might not have it updated, or they might be doing it in a different way, like they might be doing the stipend option.
So some districts, what they're doing is, is they're putting in the, okay, cause they're a bigger district, so they may. Give the twenty five, five thousand, whatever. And so what some of them are doing is, is they'll start, they'll come over here, and they'll think this, and they'll put a line item over here, and they'll just say, you're getting. A part of the council or whatever, and they're putting that dollar down, so they're not adding it into the actual salary per se on the sheet here. Yeah, the, the teacher gets it obviously, but it's not added in there. Uh, different districts are doing that differently as far as how they're reflecting that on face. Now, the other side of that is, is we have a very high, low socioeconomic school district. You're eligible for a lot more federal funds. And so when you have a lot more federal funds in your school district, that's taking federal dollars in, being able to spread those out and do that. The danger in that is, we were in a year this year where they're actually telling folks, hey. We'll see some actions by the federal government, there may be some cuts or holdups on some of those funds. And so they may, may not be receiving some of that money, they may, they may do it, I don't know, Alex can all look out. But we're even receiving letters on that, we don't, we're in a, we need a situation. We received some federal dollars, but our entire budgeted amount is what, about seventy thousand dollars, fifty to seventy?
For the ones, for the title one?
Just federal dollars total in our.
Uh, well, we have, we have more on the ID of B side, if that's what you're talking about.
When you take, when you take the three budgets amounts, you've got state, local, and federal, and we budgeted, how much is there we putting in that federal?
Well, that's just for our revenue though.
Right.
Yeah, we, we budget, this year I'm only cutting thirty five thousand.
Cause last year we did eighty.
We did eighty and thirty nine.
I know what you're meaning, you're, there's possibility of more, but we only are estimating this much because you never know if you're gonna get it. So we're, we're not as dangerous as others.
And then that tab five there is just kinda for your information, it's our most recent preliminary values from the appraisal district from June twenty third. They give you a breakdown over all the counties, so you get everyone's, but macros, ISDs, that bottom line in the first section. And so what we have to do is that folded amount in the net taxable column, we have to look at that. But we also have to take out the anticipated homestead exemption increase, and so on the backside of that page. I had asked the chief appraiser if they had anything that they could send us. And so they came up with this Excel sheet that kinda broke it down and gave us like a. Adjusted net taxable for if the hundred and forty thousand passes.
So that's where it takes our regulations to, as far as what you put in that template.
Right, that's what, that's what values I'm using for our template and coming up with revenues that we're gonna get with that number.
So, so given the information that we've given y'all, if y'all have any questions on that piece, and then really what this is meant for is, what, what, what? What suggestions, ideas, thoughts, so that we can write it down, and then we can perform, move out moving forward. We have an idea where you guys still need to be looking at. Did we hit the mark on anything, did we miss it completely? We're not taking action today.
No, no, this is just a workshop for getting it from a, getting more, more clarity.
Point of clarification, that's right. Things we learned from that. So any, so any suggestions, ideas, thoughts?
I think again, just another point of clarification, right, since this is. Go for the pennies, the voters approve it, this is budget money, right? What we're doing is we're discussing what we're gonna do with that extra funds, right? So that is what allows us to do maybe stipends this time, and then just roll it into the budget next year if it's approved, vice versa. It's not, you know.
But this has to be approved correctly before we, we have to say what we're gonna do with it before we put it out there for a vote back. That was the question.
Well, technically, no, you just have to call the election, but it would be best practice for us to be able to tell voters. This is what the board has said that they use. Just like you did with the bond, you said, hey, this is what we plan to do with the bond, this is what we're, you know, you can take a vote of yes, this is what we plan to do.
We could technically just put it on the ballot, the A T R E, this is a tax increase, see who's gonna vote for it. But if we can come up with a good game plan, and then we get, you know, everybody else to get us some good stuff out there to.
People will be behind us, I feel like.
I agree, I agree, especially if we're saying, hey, we're putting this towards salaries, you know, we're gonna.
I think what's surprising probably is some people is gonna be, to a lot of people, I mean, to most people, seven hundred thousand dollars is something that's a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but when you start dividing that out over two hundred four employees, it becomes a, not a lot of money is gonna be added to each person's pay. When you start doing that, and, and I know over the years doing here, we've given rap raises and everything, we want, we just increased y'all by four hundred something thousand or three hundred something. You know, but it didn't turn out to be a very large amount, I think that's just.
This would be seven, seven percent, nine percent.
There's, people that we've already gotten a little more competitive, like our administrative staff and stuff like that. They would only get, be, be getting two and a half percent off, off that minimum. So, but there's other positions that, yeah, I mean, there, there will be a significant increase to them, but. Like, for the paraprofessionals, it's on average seven percent. The ones that have longevity here are a little bit higher, so the average of all of our paraprofessionals is nine point one one percent.
For teachers, about what, you had that, I mean, you're always so prepared, so you calculate that percentage. Cause ours is like in about seven, it's about three grand, and our salary is about fifty, or around there.
But what it also does is, the pay scales out there, you see, the midpoint made up, maybe two or three. Getting more competitive. The districts around us, you know, they, they, they grow better.
By two things, what happened with this last legislative year helped. But I think it doesn't get as prepared for the Vader will get us much closer. We're still just far enough, what, cause even though we've increased, so did everybody else. And so just wanna make sure that I had that last. And, and there's not gonna be, my knowledge, the districts that have Vader, they're already, they're already there. There you have it, we have, we held out on our Vader weighted, because we knew that we were gonna try to get the bond. Pass first, and then get that going, and go towards the major.
So for the teacher salaries, from what we've already approved to with the Vader, the average. So for the teacher salaries, um, from what we've already approved to with the Vader, the average of, over the thirty years is four point eight percent. Um, but there's some positions, like those earlier years where it's nine percent or ten percent, you know? Uh, but then there's a few years where we're, we're just over that two and a half percent of the midpoint, um, because.
I saw that the, like, and I'm just looking at first year because if I look at it all, I'm just gonna get confused. So, uh, with and without Vader, it's about, about four thousand dollars, let's just call it four thousand dollars salary increase. If we went to the six pennies from the three, now how much, does that change, uh, change it at that point?
So if we went with the six pennies, um, the, what we've presented to you, we weren't gonna use those extra three pennies for, um, these salaries. We were gonna use that for, um, you know, the, the fund balance and the deficit and stuff like that, or whatever you guys feel is necessary. But, um, you know, we have these extra free positions built into, um, the first three pennies too. So if we needed other academic instructional positions, we could add those with those other three pennies. Or if we wanted to use those other three pennies for the added positions, and we use, utilize that money to even increase these, um, these salaries even more, we can, we can do that as well.
If you went around this rough math, you're not using towards, obviously, not towards debt, but things, but rough math, two hundred four employees, it's about twelve hundred.
I was thinking about about another four, of course, it's a noun. Another question on option three, um, so what I like about it is it kind of looks out for the school and keeping people, but it also gives you your money. So, yeah, with option three, we have five hundred towards a retention stipend, twenty-five hundred for full-time, twelve fifty for part-time. Uh, my question is, so they start this year, they have their salaries, right? They're getting paid, and this is in addition to. Right, right, so they got their salaries throughout the year, this stipend, when does it get to them? Is it like a, and, and obviously, they have to sign their contract for the next year, and I love that.
Yeah, so it, it would be paid out in July of twenty-twenty-six, after, because the cutoff, they.
They get summer bonus.
Yeah, Christmas in July.
And then they get a raise in August.
Yeah, but, because, you know, they have to withdraw their contract forty-five days before the first day of instruction. So we would know that, you know, if they're gonna withdraw their contract before payroll has to be implemented, whenever they get that bonus for.
So if we did, again, I know that we already talked about if we did the additional three pennies, but I'm just hypothetically thinking, if we did the six pennies in option three, and it's a million instead of seven hundred and fifty, uh, I guess we're looking at about the same thing, like the stipends could go up by a thousand, five hundred, or something like that.
If we are, or if we don't do this, we're extending it.
But we can still do that same thing with the stipends. Right, raise it up, maybe a little better.
First year, now towards the statement, is it? Or next year, I mean, there's lots of options here, but I need options to, to go a little bit. To the options.
What y'all, what you have to decide, the call is, are you gonna go out for the three golden, where are you gonna go for the six? Are you gonna reduce your INS? Now, the other side of that is, what you were saying, the INS has been banned now, with their strategy, every year, maybe like that. Get trying to, uh, basically shut down bonds, uh, earlier, it's a scheduled kind of deal. But the other side of that is, watching, we're looking at potential bond package in the next five years, next couple of years. If we're looking at that, you're three cents in right now. Of that bond, if you go to cut that INS down, now you're gonna have to raise up that three cents plus or you can't, you're gonna get your settlement, so that's just something to keep in mind. Uh, you know, you've got that three cents working towards paying down the debt, saving, getting, saving taxpayer money, uh, down, down, long-term. So it's, it's, have the other, but, uh, if you take it all now, and then you go out for a bond in the next couple of years, then you're talking about pulling it down, you know? And so when you go to try to get a bond, a bond capacity, I don't know, I'd say bond capacity, let's say we try to pass something that's twenty, thirty million or whatever, maybe looking at a six to the non-sent, or a bond, because now you.
I have a question, you don't like, so the two fifty K for the three positions, that math is not mathing for me.
It's, um, the three positions plus the deficit.
So that's a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
That might have been math's much better.
Yeah, it's a roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand for the three positions, and then a hundred and five for the deficit.
So we're talking about option two, that was my question. Option two, you've got two hundred and thirty thousand broken out for exempt and non-exempt. But that's not equitable compared to option one, right?
Right, so option two is gonna give the, um, salaried employees fifty thousand less. And it's gonna give the non-exempt employees fifty thousand more. So, you know, the non-exempt is gonna get more in that scenario, um.
And we're looking at your percentages of the amount of employees. It's simpler, but it is. Our, our, our recommendation would be to go with option one in, in at least year two. Maybe option three in year one, and go to option two. But if you don't wanna make it, it's too complicated, if that seems too complicated to the voters, then, you know, you stick with just a year, the option one.
I, I think, um, with option one, to, to go off of what you said with the retention bonus and stuff, right? With option one, they would get that money in like December, paid out the rest of their contract. So they're gonna be getting that money in real time, and so that's gonna also retain them, right, hopefully. Um, but also, um, they are going to, um, like, some of them are gonna get thirty-eight hundred dollars, right? But then there are gonna be those few that are only getting two and a half percent, which is gonna be less than twenty-five hundred, you know? Um, so it's, it's kind of a toss-up, we want everybody to get. But I, I think it's important to say, know that we also, we have to have a decision as to which way we're gonna go, because we can't change their salaries after the budget's approved. So we have to know, like, if we have this money in the budget, this is the route we're gonna take, you know? We can't say we're gonna go with, um, the retention bonus, and then come back and say, oh, actually, we wanna go ahead and just give everybody our these right now, because that wasn't what was approved by yourself.
Well, what she's meaning is, is before we go out for a vote for it later, we need to know that. Because if we go out.
We've got a budget that can all get.
Right, we have to make the decision, by the time budget's approved, we would approve two budgets. So if this money is available, this is how we're gonna spend it.
So when we approve, or don't approve, or whatever we do at the next meeting, we need to have a direction, where you guys need to have an action, to go which direction we're going with this as well.
So technically, it's not the next meeting, because your next meeting is one, two weeks away.
Yeah.
But we can talk about it some more at the next meeting. But at the next meeting, we need to set the date for, that's, I have to stay, I gave it on our agenda, but we've gotta set the date for the, uh, vote being moved up, because remember, it has to be earlier in August. So we've gotta set a date at the next meeting to call the Vader and all that process. Pretty early, adopt the budget, adopt the vote. So at the next meeting, you gotta give us really good guidance on what you want. Because that next meeting, the very next one, bringing you what you want, we go, that makes it.
So is it with the option three, and I know I'm just keep going back and forth, and, because I'm not making a decision, and then just try to get all the options. With option three, we don't have to necessarily adopt a second budget, it would just be, right? Because, is that the one you were talking about with?
Basically, you adopt the budget, and tax it like you've always done, and you, and you basically say, hey, this is Vader. And then, but once it's passed, then we can come back and do a, I think, I believe it's considered basically like a budget amendment, correct? To the tax.
I, I went to the last meeting, obviously, but I watched some of it online, the consulting, yeah, right? I'm thinking before, you know, a year ago, before I was on the school board, I had no idea about any of, you know, school funding or budgets, right? So I'm thinking from that, a year, a year ago. And you're looking at the six pennies versus the three pennies, as a, just a normal person like I was before, and thinking, now they're trying to double up the taxes. So is there a, a, does the consultant think there's a benefit for going for the six versus the three, I'm thinking?
Yeah, he does, for money.
Uh, yeah, more money for him, yeah, I get it, but like, just in general, like, what does it look like on the ballot, I guess? Is it gonna say six versus three, because that's what it's like, hey, we're.
The consultant's thought was, is that if you did reduce the INS amount, you're only raising it by three, you're getting six for the three. So there, that's the way you make your, hey, I'm, you know, you're getting, giving, giving up. We're getting, yeah, but the deal of it is, is this, uh, that's, that's you guys, but I don't want to, but I, I feel like when you do that, you're putting yourself at jeopardy down the road on the bond, bonding capacity, and it kind of works against this down. It, it's a short-term gain for a long-term situation. That's how I see it a little bit, I mean, I would love to get the six, you know, just leave it off, but I'm just saying, the reality of it is, at some point, you guys are gonna have to pass the bond, and when you do, you need to have that capacity.
I would just say, you have to educate upon their, the, their business.
But if you've got that three pennies, that three pennies is gonna get you the max amount that you're gonna get. I mean, those go, they're getting a whole lot more money, that's corporate. And so to a voter, you know, you know, I wouldn't mind giving you the three, but you're asking for six. Six isn't giving you very much money, but yet I'm paying a, same amount, you can do that a little bit more, you know?
I pulled this up from Andrew Bogie's presentation, this is essentially what we'd have to put on the ballot, ratifying the, at the lower tax rate of, and you'd put the voter, or the rate you're trying to adopt there. And it would result in an increase of blank percentage, which what's confusing about this, and would be confusing to a lot of the voters, is that that percentage might be negative with this homestead exemption. And then that other blank, is it an additional dollar amount? That might be a negative amount.
Well, it's a little too big, right? Was it compressed, actually?
It's like, it's almost a big one, yeah.
Well, but the thing is, because it's on the election, that will, will not impact by then, so it won't be a negative.
So really, it won't be a negative? We'll have to just educate them, though, that, like, hey, in reality, the homestead exemption is gonna increase, like, that's gonna pass.
We share information that the, on, we basically said, your vote, more than likely, going to give us an additional. And so it's gonna, and more repression is coming, so as more repression comes, even though we're adding a penny, it's not really adding that, because a penny is about to come off of repression in a year. And that's exactly what happened, um, we raised the tax rate, but then repression came into play in the tax rate. And so when they actually got to that, so their tax rate was less than walking, had to go out there and tell them what we're gonna give. It's very confusing, but that's why you try to keep that. But as far as breaking out the amounts and getting to the teachers, we just give good guidance, you guys, we can have a little, yeah. As far as, uh, information, we can give basic information pieces. And, yeah, the, the third thing is, is if you, there is the opportunity, well, this is called, to put together, uh, a group or committee that might be convinced to go out and advance the cause after it's called. And so if you have any big rules in mind, and you wanna serve on such a move, you guys can have a go. We have the big rules and the big rules, go for it, obviously, so that they know what they can do with that one.
Andrew, so a lot of everything, but, come there, remember, I know we can, get teachers, advocate for it.
After, after school, I'm going, if that, I don't need to, I don't need to. You guys can advocate, I just, I can only give straight answers.
I, I.
I was just saying.
I'm sorry, we cannot advocate.
I said fact.
So the teachers could be on the committee, or?
On that committee that I was talking about. I guess technically they could after, it's just probably.
Better not, no.
At, at, wherever the committee is, it probably should not be teachers, but.
So.
Any meetings that we have, like Vader meetings, or whatever, and NY meetings, where the teachers can, can talk, do facts, they're.
It's usually better for it to be a total.
Some churches, uh, business owners.
If you think of people, should be on this, that would be interested, that would go out there, work for this, to give that, okay. Because only they can be the ones that can, because they kind of put a more positive spin on it. We can only put, here's the best. Any other suggestions?
So just, uh, the clarifying point, for the three complicates, I bet you hamstring this later in bond capacity.
Well, 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 what it does is, is it, it makes your, makes the bond, uh, look that much.
Only if you reduce your INS by three, to compensate for those three grounds. We can still go for the three golden, three copper without.
Retention on INS, that's true.
Or as happens, if we go for the six.
But what is that go-to, instead of me, like, just not know anything about it, you know?
But when, but when you do that, you are raising the tax rate.
Right, you're raising the tax rate in.
It's still a different position, so like.
Even though they're getting the savings through the tax rate.
Well, what I was saying, what I was looking at, and I was kind of, like, like, it's different to like sixty bucks on average, for the average adult, right? So again, you know, we would have to inch people, I do think that if we, if they were to take that extra three cents of your project taxes and just toss it towards our fund balance, there's no human being in this city that's gonna go, that's a great idea, let's do that, right? Just because ninety-eight percent of the people is that, have no idea what fund balance is. You know, I mentioned fund balance, they think it's like our party money.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, they don't hear the D on the D, they're like, this is your fund balance, all right? We have a fund balance at home too, so where they go, if, if we do end up going in that direction, probably have to, we'll, 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 we'll add to it. I mean, I like the idea, I like the idea, we need to add to the fund balance.
I mean, we could say that we're gonna give a retention stipend on top of the rates increases, and then for year two, you have it for the fund balance.
Uh, it is eight twenty-seven, and we are going closed. I did.